All right, we'll go ahead and get this started.
Our intention is to create an open business. We're in the middle of a round. Just have God as an eye before he gives us the good one. To make a decision, we should pray. We receive you first of all things. Thank you for loving us. Thank you for God, for us, and thank you for God. I should just be with us. We got directed this week and just now I'm praying. Amen.
Thank you all for being here this evening. We'll go ahead and get started with the first committee, Parks and Recreation Committee.
I call it Parks and Recreation Committee to order. David Blut, Dave here.
Tom Hanks here.
Marlene Terry. Pedro Blatton, Steven.
Here.
Jennifer Cross. Debbie Thompson.
Here.
And I'm here. We have a full... We... The only thing that we have on the agenda is other. Does anyone have anything to bring before the Parks and Recreation Committee?
I have a question, James. Remember last time we... We bought the community property, split the school system. There was an outstanding balance from the school system where they had not been paying that... Half of that $400 a month, please. They're supposed to pay you $200, $200... For... It had been by six years. They were figuring out there's around $10,000. I can't remember. Mr. Hall said that he would make sure it goes forward. Mr. Bailey, did that... When we purchased that, is that purchase evenly split or was that...
It was evenly split.
Okay.
Yes, without any adjustment.
Okay, so there's a balance there that the school system was supposed to... They're supposed to take off their end, so I wanted to find out when the county will get that. It was roughly about $10,000, I think, $10,000, $10,000. And Miss Ginger has a... Have you ever been done, have you ever been done, that you know of?
Not my lunch. Have we forgotten that at all?
Okay. I just... I kept thinking about that. But I was going to ask Mr. James, can I get your ticket on that? Thank you, sir.
Do we have a question on the improvements that you don't like in the parking lot?
The... So I got Mr. Flowers will be starting to repaint and do some remodeling there at the soccer concession stand. That should be done with the building trades students there. That should wind up starting this Wednesday. They're going to try and do it and hopefully his goal is to wind up having what needs to be done and everything there by Christmas break, roughly. There was some landscaping done there at the law enforcement memorial and we are currently waiting for Mr. King. Whenever he gets a chance to get some equipment ready to help remove the trees and getting that underway for the extension of the parking lot and on the lot at the softball field. Like the electric got tied up on a substation issue down in Wark County, so they're trying to get that resolved. And when they do, they'll free up there for that.
While they're doing the painting, we still have the concrete, the pad block from Memorial. That needs to be sand waterproof. You think that you could talk down and bust the budget into the sand and get that done?
I'll talk with him.
At Memorial, the pad still looks good. That was a good job after we got it hooked up and taken off. It was cracked a little bit. It looks good. That's a... I see one. I see one that needs to be put over the pad.
I'm not sure if you're building yet, buddy. I'll pass it along.
Talking about the... Give them a moment to get it.
Does anyone else have anything for Parks and Recreation? Is not about entertaining motion to adjourn?
No, we...
Motion, but... Would they?
Second.
Second.
How do you...
All clear, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, adjourned.
Next up, Community Development.
All Communities Development Committee to order. Kelly Hudson-Jitwood.
Here.
Tom Terry.
Here.
Joyce Eaton. Here. And Jeffers.
Here.
Colby Burr.
Here.
Jerry Burr.
Here.
And ours also, just as other, so does anyone have anything for the Community Development Committee?
I'm asking, let me have a look at that.
Well, we got the tree removed courtesy of the city of Winfield, so that's been cleared out of the way. Hank Duvall got together with me today and he spoke with the company in Ohio. Normally the airport goes through as far as getting the colored pad lots. So they wound up sending a quote with that which came in well underpriced than what I thought it would for the lights. The company seems to think that considering the size of the pads, probably only four lots of particular brand that they sell will be needed. So I wound up giving that quote and that estimate and also the specs on those lights and sent it to Ms. Walker. Ms. Walker emailed over to Lifestyle. Had Lifestyle look at the lights to see if it will meet whatever needs they wind up having. And as soon as I get a blessing from Lifestyle, we'll get the order in for the lights. The company, like anything else, they're saying it'd be about three to six weeks for the lights to wind up arriving. And the electrician is already underway as far as seeing what he'll need to get that ready and installed. So... The... Also, one more thing on Community Development. I was going to... We're in the middle of No Trash November, which is a litter effort for the state of Tennessee. And on November the 19th, some dumpsters will be placed at Winfield Municipal Building, location near Robbins Elementary School, the Stripport Community Center, the Seventh District Fire Hall and the Pine Hill Fire Hall. Basically, those dumpsters will be there to assist people to... If they feel like they need to finally do a fall cleaning, clean out their house to put in there. If some folks want to wind up doing some litter pickup, you know, if they want to go clean up some sides of the roads and hey, it'll be an easily accessible place to use for a dumpster there. And that dumpster will be there that Saturday and Sunday, the 19th and 20th will be picked up on that. So if anybody wants to put together a litter cleanup cruise or anything like that, just give a holler and we'll make sure you have all the supplies you needed and we'll go from there.
Fourth day of...
November 19th. And the dumpster will be in place for the 19th and 20th. Then we'll pick them up on that Monday.
If the community doesn't get a dumpster and they have cleanup, can they just leave it at the fire department? That's different way to do that.
What's that?
If the community like paint lot doesn't get a dumpster and we decide they don't clean up over there, can they pile it up at the fire department? Watch the grid during the rain to clean up and they'll come to get it.
I think we probably can't. That'd be coordinated in the spring. Yeah.
Anything else? Anyone? Motion. Make a motion to adjourn?
My second.
Who made the motion, second?
I made the motion.
Second.
Eaton.
Next up, Buddy Cuddy.
Thank you, sir. If our budget's made your order, she'll motion.
Here.
Ron McBrug.
Here.
Ben Jenner.
Here.
And Jerry Burr.
Here.
And I'm here. What we have is the amendments. We'll get those amendments, which you may have to have this person come up and talk about.
I don't wish to worry, which you're doing.
You'd like to come on up and talk about... What you've been asking about.
All right. I'm not even willing to just move some of my earmark funds over from additional fees, title and registration to my budget to supplement some salary. I'm willing to restructure my salary scale a little bit. So instead of having just a chief deputy and then deputy clerk sitting at that, I'm willing to put a supervisor level rather than the chief deputy. Somebody that's going to be just responsible for all the reports and things like that. And it's getting to where, which I've got more information and stuff for you here as well with our increase in fees and funds that we've been gathering over the last couple of years. And so the reports of course as well are just interesting. So I'm trying to get this one person kind of moved to the side of it's doing nothing but the reports for now. But I feel like that is a much bigger job than just your standard deputy clerk. So I'm trying to adjust that. It's not going to be the same pay scale as a chief deputy. Still going to be below that. But I can use the funds out of my additional title, registration earmark funds that stay within my budget or within figures or their back payment general on those and supplement that salary. And that difference right there is listed for the year for what would be the remainder of this year, which would be the $2,907. I currently have $7,388 in that line item. But of course that is... My lowest right now has been about $1,500 a month that gets put into that earmark funds.
So your old friend, I don't know if it's even around $50.
Yeah. So for the year, I should be bringing in about $18,000 just in that one earmark.
How much were raised, are you thinking?
So she would have been going up to the six plus in July of next year. So right now she's at the $13,99. So it would be running it up to $16.14. Be $0.50 below what the current chief deputy is.
$2.
Yeah, it was like $2.15, I think, when we got it.
Mr. Bailey, if you have a chance to review?
I haven't because I've been talking with finance director. Let me ask Ms. Potter. Is this to the end of the budget year or would this be reoccurring?
So I want it to be reoccurring. Obviously, I didn't even talk about it in the budget committee hearings and stuff here in a few months. But we and Ginger talked about that earlier as well. What I know that had to happen would be if I want it to keep continuing to be pulled out of the earmark funds, we would have to do a budget amendment each year, correct?
Yeah, because this is not going to be funded, this portion. Right. By tax dollars. So because these are restricted funds every year coming from these fees, she would have to do a budget amendment one would run in July to keep funding just this difference.
And that would be the only difference? That would be the only thing that I could try to pull from it? It would just be that difference for that salary?
So you're asking for an amendment to get you through the end of the budget year?
Yes, currently. And then talk about it again during the budget committee. Because she would be moving up on the salary scale anyway because of her service years come July. And it wouldn't be as much of a difference at that time, but...
So this... This difference here, you're not wanting to lose?
You're talking about the... Where you could be... Really false.
Yes.
It probably just wouldn't be that much if we're looking at what her service years would be.
So you're constantly like $0.50 below whatever that deputy's...
Yes.
Okay.
The first one, she isn't allowed.
It is as long as the funds can be drawn to get you to the end of the budget year.
And I think once she has already accumulated in there, she has it covered the rest of this year. And like it states in the law, what's left has to stay in that restricted fund balance. So she'll only have them sitting there to carry it forward. And what she earns next year will go into that fund. Yeah. It's ongoing fact.
It needs to be discussed at your budget hearing.
Yeah, definitely needs to be discussed. And I sort of prefer to do those things, but this one, the money is already... It's already there. It's not going to affect the budget at all. Our budget. It's not coming from the tax rate. It's coming from the fees collected that stays in that budget anyway. No. You better correct me when I'm wrong here. And so what we're going to be doing is allowing that to the end of that fiscal year, June 30th. And then when we start budget hearings, then we'll decide whether we're about to continue that. It sounds like we'd have to do it every year, but in any way.
We would just have to pull those additional funds.
Yeah, pull those funds from that spot, the budget amendment. The one question I did have for whoever can answer it. If she's having a supervisor position, does that position actually have to be created by the store? To be official, to pay them more? Because that's the question I had is why would that employee? But you know what? If she's creating... If there's going to be a position, if this person's job and duties are supervisor, she's not out or if she's out or deputy's out, this person would be the supervisor in charge. So it kind of... That makes sense of why they would be paid more, just like in the sheriff department, sergeant or whatever. You know, in the past, it's just been you and a deputy and then everybody else was, you know, on that same level. So that was a concern of mine. I'll tell you about paying somebody more than all those others. If you want to actually create a supervisor position, then it kind of makes sense. If we... But what's this... What's the process?
It would... I mean, it's however she wants to set up her salary schedule.
Okay, so we don't have to... We don't have to set up a...
Now, do you have a... And I ask this. Do you have a chief deputy in your office?
Yes.
You do?
I do.
Okay. And is this thing we're talking about?
No. No.
Okay.
So that's the question. It's third person who's basically besides the chief deputy. Everybody's kind of all that same based on their years, experience, degrees, et cetera. So maybe some person more. Well, my concern is that means why? But if it's... If you... If this person was actually taking on extra duties or supervisor, but do we define that or does she define that? I just wanted...
You know, she has to define that.
Okay. So she can... She can tell that person that they're the assistant to the assistant deputy at the Wark County office stand out there. So something like that. I just wanted to... It's definitely got to do with how to achieve yourself. I don't want to come back in three months or something.
The only thing that this board can do is do a budget amendment. However, to do it
Okay.
Through the end of the budget year and then review it for the case bench.
Yes.
Would that be for a temporary permanent position?
I mean, this person already, yeah, is...
I mean, temporarily until the end of the budget year.
She's not bringing a new person in. This is already a full power position.
Yeah, they're already there. It's going to be making more. Again, it does not affect the budget. That's important key. But anybody staying in her office, whether or not we'll do this or not. It's just what she was thinking. What do I normally need to run it for?
So this is a new earmark and it just started July one. So I can use it for anything related to title and registration. That's basically what the earmark is made for. Now, across the state, there are other clerks that are using it for supplementing salaries or even bringing somebody in with just those things. Obviously, our amounts are going to be high for me to use for the circle salary person. And I was just wanting to do it to supplement and get this kind of underway. But I can use it for numerous things. Like if my credit crashes and we're before and I was worrying if it's a lost $2,000 instead of $1,500 I put in there, I can pull the money out of this and use it for that as well because it's related to title and registration.
Or you could wind up doing a salary supplement. You know, I mean, if you did like just wind up doing a bonus, that way you could wind up seeing where you're currently at, where you're going to wind up being, you know, come the next budget year to see where you're at and reevaluate it there as far as if you want to make that a permanent fixture. I mean, just to tide you over till then, that way you know where you are come the budget year.
Does anybody from the budget committee have any questions for the commissioners? Thank you, ma'am.
So you would be approving a budget amendment to add these funds?
Into my budget.
Into your budget for this purpose?
For just through this budget year.
Correct.
Yeah, this is not an ongoing thing. It would just be getting...
And then when you come for hearings, you'll bring it up again?
Yes, yeah.
Funds are... It's appropriate for this purpose?
Yes.
All right, we'll get that in a second. We'll get to budget amendments. I just wanted you to come up and explain.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, Miss Ginger. We have several budget amendments. I think the rest of the board, if you'd like to close it off, please.
We'll start with the one-on-one amendment number five. The first portion on that is the airport. Airport and this is the grant. It's money going in, coming out 100%. The second item is for the district attorney. It is a Volka and it is the Volka Tennessee South Court's grant, $10,000. It was already approved in last fiscal year. The money was bused in last fiscal year. But I think they had some changes out there. If I'm incorrect, please guide me different. But we have to bring it back in this year and they had to December 31st to extend these funds for this grant. And then of course, third item was Ms. Rachel Billbury, the item of her employee. And then the fourth item is for Judge Ellis and that is for her to hire a new deputy position. And you guys had mentioned at the county commission last month to bring it back again this year. So that's what I did. Do we want to stop here? Do you want to go on with the budget amendment?
Budget committee will head to budget by budget. Just will head to budget by budget.
Okay.
Yeah, budget by budget. So we have budget from here by... The last one, nothing's changed on that. I thought that position, it still would come out of the budget. It still would come out of the fund. So it is a unfunded position that we would have to take out of the joint fund till the end of the fiscal year. And then we would have to figure out what to pay for it during the budget hearing. So maybe it would kind of be in the red until, I mean, we take something out of the, you know, just like any other account, the same account. We have money that we put back. The money is for, of course, any emergency goes, happens. Some government shuts down, we have to pay employees for three months. I mean, a thousand things could happen with that money. We've already seen some of those things happen with the sewage situation that some of you not know much about, but over at the jail, it's been a constant thing. I was told they had that whole little PO for $5,000 there for that. So that seems to be a constant thing we're going to have to work about. I don't understand if we were spending on that because we were having to haul out the waste. Now, we've got it fixed. It keeps going down. Going down for a while. Thankful of Mary Jeffers and town of Huntsville kind of stepped in there, helped us out during the transition phase. And we've got it. We're on the process. I don't know if we completely got that back in yet or in the process. I know the budget amendment was done.
Well, what you got there is you wound up... The pumps came in, pumps arrived, the pumps were installed. And then all of a sudden, pump number one, every bit of the wiring on the inside, when it was hooked up, it wound up smoking and went into utter flames, shot up the top of it when they wound up having it. So once they had it there, they happened to stumble upon that the pumps that they ordered was for when it appeared pumps out about 35 pounds of water pressure. So after doing another test, it turns out that the pumps actually needed was for 50 pounds. So now what's happening there is as far as it goes, as far as the sewage pump goes, that that company said that they will reimburse us for the time that they had to come in and pump that because that was their mistake. And as far as having to upgrade to the 50-pound pumps, as far as that goes, that the difference that they would wind up in themselves for that. So they've had to reinstall the old pumps to keep it going until the new pumps arrive, hopefully the two to three weeks. And so everything's back up and running, you know? So I mean, there's no overflow or anything like that. And you know, EPA and TDEC is still absolutely weren't satisfied. Matter of fact, I haven't sent them an email today. So everything is good to go there on their end. So that's where we're at with that.
And it's still... It's still continuing to be an issue. I just want exactly one thing to pop up. So like I said, there's nothing changed with how the position would be put. So any questions from the budget committee? If not...
Well, this is the one I asked to be... Yes, I had the... This is not on the budget, but after one of speaking with Judge Ellis and folks, it just didn't seem... The secretary, that secretary, that job has a secretary, correct? That... There is a secretary that is funded for that, for that office.
For that office.
But it's been... It's been funneled out. It's been kind of lost in the system somewhere. And she doesn't have anybody to do that without, I guess, cutting that, that particular area that that secretary covers now, obviously the Mexican. And even though that office does have a budgeted secretary, she's actually without a secretary. And I think you told me that you were the only judge that didn't actually have a secretary working for you at the moment.
Yes, I can address that.
Confusing everybody.
I can address that a little bit. So the part-time judges were part-time by statute. Because we've got a population less than 30,000, statute says for part-time. It has nothing to do with how much work we do, how much we're on the bench, how many courts we hold, how many private acts we have that add responsibility to that position. But the statute, that two-word part-time is strictly by statute because our population's less than 30,000. As you all know, we have different courts here in Scott County that to help our citizens because we're so far away from the big metropolitan cities, that there's just nowhere to go. We have children support. We started that this morning at 7:00 on Monday mornings to help the schools and those parents that are in that situation to get them up and get them ready, get them moving for the week. That's very successful. Has been in the past. It was suspended because of COVID. The state suspended that all that for that time frame, but we have started that back. Also due to COVID court, which is in addition to other general sessions judges. The domestic violence court is another court that's in addition to those other part-time general sessions judges by the population that have that. Also have adoption jurisdiction that I do. Harper's Court jurisdiction. I'm one of the few general sessions judges that put in panel, very poor response line. The small home shows up to 25,000. And we have recovery court. We know the problem with our recovery and deprivation and all of our issues within our county. So the cotton had to build a recovery court so that we could service those individuals here within our county and have some services to try to keep them clean so that they can be better citizens for our community. They can change the lives of their children, change the lives of their family members. That meets once a... Once a night, I mean, once a week, every other week as well. And so when my court, my assistant, what is needed is the clerks are there. The clerks get the docket, they pull the files, they bring them in the court. That's what they do. And then as I rule, I hand it to them and they follow that. But what I do then when I leave the bench is I prepare the orders myself after hours because last week I was on the bench for four days last week. This week I'm on the bench three days and I have a family seven more than I take thirty. So I'm doing that when I'm late at night or on coming Sundays to get ready for the juvenile docket every Monday morning. Because I don't have time to do that any time before that unless I stay like Friday night. But of course, later at night, trying to get that to happen. But my assistant would be on today, we had court. DCS had a docket, dependency neglect, the dependency neglect docket. Our private attorneys had cases they brought. The schools had cases that was there for privacy and probation and votes issues. And all of those are coming in from all these entities. But there's nobody but me at this point to combine all that to get that ready so that can be manageable. How many of those with DCS is just a few? It's going to take me 20 minutes. How many has a termination of criminal law space that not take three hours? And so just somebody that can manage all that is one of the reasons why I would need the assistant. Case reviews for extended trials. I think the last time before you would have... Case reviews for extended trials, I think the last time before you, we had a trial with thirteen witnesses. And just going through, DCS today, one of the hearings, it was in a folder that was this big. I spent some time, and then wanted that, kind of that, based on what we were hearing and that, what was gonna be necessary for me to get my hands on it, put it. So, those case reviews for those extended trials. Also, we have team meetings here at lunch, either a domestic violence team meeting or a recovery court team meeting. So, on Wednesday, when we wrap for lunch, there's always a group eating lunch while we're doing team reviews in the jury room. And my assistant would be the one making sure that people are notified to be there and what their actions are when they're there, so that when we go in after that hour, we're just right on pace of doing what we need to do. So, these are just all ones that, that I have been doing in the defense. But you're right, Mr. Jeffers, there is a line budget for, I think it's called an assistant clerk, I'm not sure how that's counted on there. But four or five years ago, when Ms. Lillian Smith retired from Judge Cotton, that, those monies were diverted to our recovery court. We have a recovery court specialist that's there, her name is Keisha Trower. She has all the skills and the knowledge and special expertise to evaluate and to assess individuals who come before recovery court as to what they need. Review is another piece of that, that does an assessment that Ms. Trower will give to her to do, because that's an annual assessment. She's not qualified to do an annual assessment, but just for recovery and what they might need. So, she's one, she's one piece of that. But it's, our recovery court is so successful in our community, that to pull that position out of recovery court would be detrimental, not just to me. I mean, may not get an assistant, that'd be detrimental to me, that just means I'm, I'm just working later and not. But it would be detrimental to pull that back and to give that to me. And she's done so much to help. We have community participants in our program working, kind of has paid a mind and asked of her. And so, all of those assessments and reviews that she and Becky Hunter does, is what keeps those participants on track for what they need, so that they can be better citizens. And it's just relieved the county of a lot of them coming back into the system, the children coming to foster care, and just the monies that helping them, I say. So, I know I'm, I'm just talking, probably feels like I'm ringing one. But also, just a buffer for me, it is a conflict for me, if someone needs to ask the court a question, the clerk's office can't answer it, because they don't know when this case can be set. Again, if I'm talking to the individuals, if they're a close ally or a relative to the attorney, they'll be really careful about information that's shared, or else I'm conflicted out. And then we've got to get other judges that come in and handle those cases, which is, which is not a productive way to, to use our time. So, I tried to address all the issues that you had mentioned when you were speaking about that. And I've been trying to answer many questions, I remember what Mr. Chadwell said before, you know, it's not, it's not in the budget to, to come back in the spring. But that's where we are, and that's, that's where I am with my, with my, as your general sessions and juvenile court judge. If I have to ask any questions?
Do you have any questions?
No, well, I, I don't think it's right that, I mean, it's, it's hard to put somebody in a position, in an elected position, and write off the latter overwhelming, to me, it comes to the latter overwhelming with the amount of paperwork that you're having to do, that that assistant position should be doing for you. And I don't think that that's a fault of yours, that's, it's kind of, that lost in the system down there, I think. And what about if we, if we funded, if, if, if we funded, if we could fund this position to the end of the year, to the end of the fiscal year, on a temporary permanent position? And review it at the end of the fiscal year, if, if the, if this board also chooses, would that, would that be, would that help you? And we would like to, I would like to see you look into your budget and to see if there's some way that you can help us fit that into the budget at the end of fiscal year.
That would certainly help, like right now, I'm also trying to start an all Judge Cotton's form survival, and so on, individually as well. But certainly, that would help, you know, that would help get a lot of that started. And I will, it would be more than that, to look within the budget. It's hard for me to look into the budget now, because I don't know what else is coming out of those different parts of the budget. But certainly, I would now, by the time, you know, the end of the fiscal year, to see, see where we are. At that point, if I could find some money anywhere else that was to help with that some.
And that could give you like six, like six months or something like that. But I, I would.
Do you have any more questions for Judge Ellis? Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll discuss it right here.
Okay.
So, again, it's the same details of the issue from before. There is a position there, but I have to, I've been sent by someplace else, which is how government grows and teacher grow, and the position is up here, and we created another position to wait to place that position, before you know it, you got a lot of people that are doing a job. So, you know, what the answer is on that position, getting that position is, it sounds like it's becoming rooted into that program. But at the same time, it comes down to, do we want to, as simple as budget, there's, there's nothing changed from before the election to now, of what was there. So, my recommendation is that we look forward on amendment one for the airport district attorney and county clerk. What is the pleasure of the committee?
Make a motion.
Make a motion to?
Save the air court, county clerk.
The district attorney, the first three item?
Yes.
Okay, but I have a second.
I have a second.
A second, Mr. Terry, to the court of the full commission, amendment five, if you say the?
He's on the commission.
I have a motion, somebody is on the committee.
I'll make a motion, I'll make that.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
The first three, the first three.
Okay, so, I say again.
So, we just do the first three.
Just the first three, would not include general sessions requests. So, I have motion and second to the four, amendment five, airport district attorney, county clerk. Holding a, a real call, please, shoot a motion? Probably Burt?
No.
David, just, Jim?
Aye.
Jerry, Jim? I'm sorry, Jerry, but, God, I have a, I have a motion, carry this to full commission. All right, next.
On the, on the other one, the general sessions? So, you've not addressed that one?
Yeah, I just said it did. You go with that. So, amendment one sixteen?
One sixteen, we're taking from their fund balance eighty-six thousand, they have a couple supplies, they're having to increase. They purchased, and Jerry, you might need to give me five, what was that, he's putting up there, fifteen thousand?
Right.
So, it can hang up, and it was a fat fork fed worse. Okay, and then the fifty thousand was for the?
The compactor.
The compactor, and so that's what you have for recycling.
Uh, this is, just always spinning around, you have any questions? If Terry could help you with that? Not, you can motion, move the minute one for? A motion, Mr. Burke? So, now, Mr. Burt, the forecourt commission, all fair to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have one eighteen, the minute one?
Uh, I'm confused, I thought we were moving forward, those, those were separate. So, this, I find, I sort of confused. Yes, I want to change my vote if I believe it described that.
We were in the form.
Attorney for, about that.
There was no act to change, who wanted to change the vote?
Amendment four.
I will say, this is a review session, nothing's happening at the work session. Action is taken at the regular.
Yeah, this is just a, so it's killed here, as many can't be around that before court. Uh, I'm sorry, what was it?
One eighteen?
One eighteen, yes.
One eighteen, they're using from their fund balance, last year, they had an assistant, this year, when we prepared the budget, she was not there. And some bookkeeper consented my items for that, and their vehicle, workman's comp, was a little higher than we had budgeted, and that's what one eighteen's budget amendment is.
My pleasure, committee.
Make a motion.
First, Mr. Burke, before the, aye? Motion by Mr. Burt, before the full commission, all fair to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have drug form one twenty-two.
Drug form one twenty-two, the sheriff is having to purchase a new drug agent dog, so he's taking this from his fund balance. He got three quotes, because it's over ten thousand dollars, but he's requesting for eleven thousand dollars to be re-allocated.
And he has to have the drug one, uh, in practice. Pleasure, committee? First, my Mr. Burt?
Certainly.
Second, Mr. Burt, before the full commission, all fair to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have one thirty-one?
One thirty-one, you'll see that we just re-classed workman's comp insurance. He brought in bridge work this year, the note that you guys approved, eight hundred fifty, and he had some federal money, fifty-three, and he's using some of his fund balance. And what he's doing, having re-classed some of the work that he did to bring in the bridge money, and then he's going to do, if he's here, I think he's wanting to purchase not only the equipment he gave, the note, but I think he's wanting to purchase a vehicle to do it for it, Kevin?
We're gonna purchase a new driver, all available for thirty years now, but. And then I've got some more money that we, we turn back on, come back in, USDA money, where we have done work, and they're reimbursing us. And once we get it back, we will be purchasing some pickups, we'll take those back again.
Make an adjustment on the workman's comp.
The driver didn't buy out of desk one, that's mine.
And then we're setting up the notes for that eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, so that's your one thirty-one.
You put the finance director, have a motion for this on? Motion by Mr. Burke? Second, Mr. President, for the long full commission, all fair to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a court of education.
The last one is for federal budgets, one forty-two, and they're doing some changes, re-classing within their budget, and then they brought in that new grant for a hundred sixty-three thousand, one forty-two.
Pleasure, committee? Motion, Mr. Burke, before the, aye? Second, Mr. Burt, before the, to the full commission, all fair to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's the committee, does anybody have anything else to bring us under the budget committee?
Mr. Chadwell, I'd wind up mentioning one thing, we'll get some more clarification later this week to see where we're at, but we're also, we're getting ready to get another infusion of cash through, through ARP again. It basically involves, one time infusion of cash, it's basically involves, if there is a county, basically, that has a Indian tribe in your community, or if there are federal lands that are inside your community, then you will become eligible, basically, loss of income would be, wind up restored to those counties. Not every county in the state of Tennessee will wind up getting this, but Scott County, considering we have Big South Fork running through us, we will wind up getting a portion of that money. As it stands right now, it'll be about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and some change. So, that will be a one-time infusion money. Now, one thing that me and Ms. Reynolds, and I've also tried to get some clarity through Mr. Sanders, and he didn't give me a solid answer today either, we don't know if it's going to be a hundred and nine thousand for this payment coming by the end of the year, and then a hundred and nine thousand in January to make the two eighteen, or if it's gonna be two separate payments, two eighteen, piece. So, but we should wind up getting some clarity on that by the end of this week. But, you know, that's, that's another blessing that we'll take that's heading our way, and it can basically be spent on anything except for lobbying activities. So, that's, that's another blessing, we'll thank the Lord above for, and we'll move on with it.
And where are you looking at possibly putting that for the ambulance program?
Well, right now, we've got one point seven, so, I mean, if there's extra money that, you know, we wind up needing, I mean, there we go. Mr. Hill, I spoke with him today, which I was gonna get to that, the Percy Services, but he's hoping to wind up having the drawing redone, hopefully have it ready and bid it, ready to bid out by December the twelfth. So, that's where we'll be at with that, so, yeah, we could.
Thank you, sir, if anybody else, anyone? If not, attorney, motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Mr. Burt, second by Mr. Burt, all fair to say aye? And Mr. Mayor, we want to adjourn, next we have, uh, continue on?
Go and get you, get you a drink of water, Pete, one. All right.
Uh, calling the government, we need the order, David Goodday, Sean Terry, Neil Burt, David James, Kelly Cozy, Chip, you know, Kobe Burke? And I'm here. First, we have a magistrate appointment, should have a letter, there. This is a letter from Judge Ellis for that appointment, I will, uh, we'll do it. Mayor Jeffers, Board of Commissioners, municipal letter of recognition, Scott County Attorney Mark Strange be approved as the judicial commissioner magistrate for the General Sessions Court. Mr. Strange has been practicing law for twenty-nine years, has the insurance of his law license in nineteen ninety-three by the Tennessee Supreme Court. His legal career has been a proud practice of law from nineteen ninety-three, present except for two thousand fourteen, two thousand twenty-one. He is assistant federal defendant for the Eighth Judicial District. Mr. Strange has a vast amount of legal knowledge in many different areas of the law that will assist his decision-making as a judicial commissioner magistrate, specifically, but not limited to, bound to violent felony, take part in orders, protections, and certições. I wish to thank the Board of Commissioners and yourself, the grants for consideration of this request for the woman, Mark Strange, as judicial commissioner magistrate for the General Sessions Court. It is an honor to appear before the commission answering any questions that may arrive, and be signed by Judge Ellis. Other than any, any questions, if we're gonna have one, the playbook. I have a, I have a motion, David. Got motion for today, a four day hall? Second, Mr. Burt, before the long full commission, all fair to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the ag community board appointments. Leo Sturio, the county director of ag agent of UT, TWSU, Extinction, Scott County, has represented an update to the Scott County Agriculture Community. Her request is to appoint Commissioner Kobe Burke for a two-year term, replacing Commissioner Patty Brown and Farm Representative Robert Terry for a two-year term, replacing Farm Representative Greg Rouse. And therefore, it is resolved that the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby approves the request to appoint Commissioner Kobe Burke for a two-year term, replacing Commissioner Patty Brown and Farm Representative Kobe Terry for a two-year term, replacing Farm Representative Greg Rouse. My pleasure, committee? A motion, David?
No.
Second, Mr. Terry, I believe, before the long full commission? Second, Mr. Terry, I believe, four day on commission. All fair to say aye? Any opposed? Next, next we have this, this is a problem that Mr. Jeffers wanted to come up and speak a little bit, that all the money was going to bring in for.
Thank you, Captain. I just wanted to tell you that we can all, we need all the information about the yard and reapreaisals. Scott County's going to fire a reappraisal, and we are seeing significant increase in our sales of equipment and improved property. So when our final values come out next year, it's a likely to be a big shock. But I do expect a high increase, which brings me to our tax rate. So especially when our change from next year, people are going to see that and automatically think that's their tax bill that's on. So the values going up, that are certified, the tax rate is very welcome down. And I gave you all this information. I'm not going to need it even if it's on. And on this one where our property tax reapreaisals up there is blue line, it's back before this year, somebody can't click it here. But the Tennessee Comp Cellar's website has this on there, and it's a little two-minute cartoon, and they're very confident. They show how a parcel evolves, and they go through a reappraisal process. It's just a basic little cartoon. It's very helpful. And the purpose of the reappraisal, we cannot make money. That's where that certified tax rate comes in. Our values, if I all get that tax rate, it's going to come down. So I encourage everybody to tell your districts that as well. Because I'm afraid what's going to happen, there's going to be the values, it's going to be a big shock. And also, one of my concerns, what I'm, right now, the market is, it's selling like crazy what happens in two years. And that's on this back page as well. The reappraise of five-year title. So you have to take into consideration the last five years, and hopefully it doesn't happen. But if their economy, the next couple years goes down, we're going to have to hold those values. And I also got some information in there about the ratio. And that comes into play with personal property and other stuff, property, public facilities. Also included this list with all the numbers. And under that one that says sale, sale price, that's an example of the statute of what they're selling for. And on the right side is what we have in the grades. And you can clearly see that people are paying a lot more than we have to praise for. But I just wanted to bring this information and give it to you all and tell you what's coming. And also in that back page, in two thousand eighteen, that was our last reappraisal. And the base cost for our house was ninety-six thousand. And this could change the share, but right now, we're at a hundred and seventy thousand. So we're seeing significant changes. But just wanted to put it out there, let y'all see what's happening for a big shock.
To add to what Ms. Kidney was saying, I know on the mayor's conference in August, the state county clerk's office was showing all ninety-five counties, and Scott County was selling property at seventy-nine percent of its retail values. So pushing close to eighty.
But you're welcome to come by the office or email me if you have any of the happy and positive awareness. Thank you.
You mentioned earlier about the kind of shock in community and the districts. Were you kind of saying where values will go up, let the state come in and lower the rate to kind of offset that?
We can't make money during reapreaisals. So yes, if our values are up, we have to calculate that penny. And Ginger's been great helping with. That tax rate will come down so that we bring in the same money.
It goes out.
Yeah. What happens is those change forms go out, and they see those values, and it will show last year's and this year's something. And they see that, and it's shocking. And I've never seen it so, like, this year, well, past two, three years.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, next we have speed limits. Production on Honeycutt Road. The rest pursuit of Tennessee COVID, eight five eight one five five. County legislative body has the power to decide six laws speed limits as they may be deemed appropriate for any maintenance by the county. There is a speed limit on Honeycutt Road, the road exceeds the maximum limit safe operation of local residential neighborhood with multiple residents. And there are several families in the area with small children. And out there, it will be resolved if Scott County Board of County Commissioners does see about changes to the speed limit on Honeycutt Road to fifteen miles per hour. But more, the Scott County Road Department has requested direct appropriate signage on all sections of the road including but not limited to the repulsor speed limit signs on Honeycutt Road. A motion, Mr. Terry. I say, Mr. Burke, before that one full commission, all fair to say aye? Any opposed to that? All right. Next we have the holiday schedule. May I have anything specific on this that?
The only thing that's changed on the holiday schedule is that Columbus Day on COVID night was lined up adding from the previous twenty twenty-two.
Do I have any questions on holiday? A motion, Mr. Woodday, for the full court? Second on the, all fair to say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. That's all we have in the new governmental committee. Unless somebody else in the committee has something?
We've got the holiday schedule for me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's get that over there. Yeah, holiday schedule here. Federal holiday schedule, moving forward to court dates. We've got January workshop from the sixth to the third. February court meeting from the twentieth to the twenty-first. And September workshop moving from the fourth to the fifth. Pleasure of the committee. Make a motion. The motion, Mr. Jeff? I say, Mr. Burke, before that full commission, all fair to say aye? Any opposed? Now we have. If anybody has anything else, they want to bring it forward, the new governmental committee. If not, I need to pay a motion to the general. A motion by Mr. Burke. Second by Mr. Bush, the general meeting is going on. I'll sit up behind, if we have to, the general. You do faster like that. Mr. Mayor, your general.
All right. Next up, emergency services committee.
All emergency services, the order, Robin Burke.
Here.
David Day. Amy Jacob. Peter Tyler, Ray, and Stacy and Karen, Tom, Harry. Toby Burke. And I'm here. First up, emergency management. I don't have any sense. If I have any questions?
So, I don't know. We've been talking about getting their steps at the building down here.
Wait, we'll get the building here out further. I'll catch you, Kevin.
Matt, two, another question. All radio towers rolling, in the process of getting them?
In the process.
Okay.
Ambulance services?
Make any questions for me? I haven't had anything tonight.
You believe in school status?
Right now, we're shedding a little water, so we're good.
Make it to reset.
Right, it's made it this long. It'll make a little longer.
I would like to ask that, I know we've got a little lot to go on that, but that the commissioners think about and consider that money that the county committee and possibly going to help us get that new ambulance service going. I know the reason we weren't able to do it was because of the COVID, right? It was too hot. So we'll wait till that bid comes in. But just think about it, pray about it, and consider possibly using that money toward if it will help and, you know, we'll make it enough when the bid comes in that we go ahead and get that project going. Sure I do. It belongs to.
I want a question for one point seven, but it's not on that.
So I really highly recommend you to pray about that. Share this department?
I don't know if you're buying school meter.
Do they have anyone else? Motion, Scott, will you ready to adjourn?
I'll say that.
That's about all. Tom, Harry. Your adjourn.
Next up, building grounds.
I call the building grounds, made the order. David Woodday here, Sean McGory. Joyce Deaton. Jared Burke. David Buck from Stevens. Chipper Duckrum. And I agree. Do you have other, or we attend that?
I'm waiting on co-vax still for the concrete.
The concrete wants to, okay. We're waiting on, on, on. I'm sure hopefully that's one for.
There's, there's, there's.
This ambulance service down here, on the, the. Does anyone else have anything to bring for the building grounds committee?
I'd like to say that on Friday, there's a better than state program and at the American Legion Code one thirty-six in O'Nah. And they were invited everyone to be there for a little more. This speaker will be Thomas Ken, sorry, the first file, Thomas Ken. And you can have a little program. Four times, the time is ten thirty-eight, over from eleven, ten thirty-eight.
I think you need to put a fire in the box.
Yeah, you may walk in and then make a walk.
Just a little nuts.
I may have those.
A motion to adjourn? Any second?
Second.
All fair to say aye? We're done.
Is that ten o'clock? Yes.
Just tell her you want to leave us out, Burke?
Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Lord, I just want to thank you for each and every one of you. Lord, most importantly, I want to thank you for not only the calls for us. If there's somebody who doesn't know you, I pray that they seek you before it's ever last and too late. Lord, go with us as we depart here tonight, lead God and direct us in all things, and use not pray. Amen.
Have such your home.